To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stepek, will you take attendance, please?
Certainly. President Alexandria.
Here.
Vice President Raisington.
Here.
Secretary Stepek here. Chairperson Swag.
Here.
Trustee Donnelly.
Here.
Trustee Guthrie. Nah, trustee Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you. I do see any changes to the board agenda?
Uh, I do have one actually. I have a proposed quote that was just sent today under finance operations for the Nightlock security amount. The quote has been revised down to $50,042.85 and there's a copy of that revised proposal in front of each of you.
Okay, we'll go over that when we get to it.
Yes.
Okay, item three, meeting minutes of January 10th as part of consent agenda. Any motion, please? Mr. Swag.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support?
Support.
Support Mr. Donnelly? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Here's item four, pre-arranged request to address the board. We have item A, presentation by the most students. We're running out of time.
Absolutely.
We actually have a video or a PowerPoint. So they're all dressed, ready to go. Alright, here we go. Okay, so, sorry this is awkward. So Oxford HOSA was started about three years ago and we're really excited because we've grown from about 25 kids to now we have 80 kids in our club. So after just three years, we're that large. So I just happened to paste the mission statement from the HOSA website because HOSA stands for Health Occupations Students of America and the mission of HOSA is to enhance the delivery of compassionate quality healthcare by providing opportunities for knowledge, skill, and leadership development of all health science education students, therefore helping the student meet the needs of the healthcare community. So basically what they want to do is introduce the healthcare field to secondary, now they started middle school, middle school, secondary, and post-secondary students. And so what the students do, they learn a skill or prepare for an event and they prepare for a competition. The competition, we call them leadership conferences. So they can compete usually in one or more skills. So, I'm sorry, they can only compete in one of the skills. So they could compete in a skills event, a leadership event, or a team event, all around the healthcare field. So some of the leadership and team events, what they want to stress is your, like we said, leadership skills, your presentation skills, things like career health display, research persuasive essay, medical photography, HOSA Bowl, community awareness, public health. I just named a couple, but there's a lot. There's probably about like 15 to 20 of these events. So students can either compete in a leadership or team event, or the students today are going to show you some of the skills that they learned in their skills events. So the skills events can include things like clinical nursing, EMT, physical therapy, dental science, veterinary science, sports medicine, and CERT. CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Team. We have a really good CERT team. Every year we go to nationals or internationals or nationals for our CERT team. So I wish I could take all the credit and say that I taught them everything, but I really have done nothing but organize. So I pair the students up with somebody in the field that teaches them the real skill. So, and not from a textbook, but people who are in the field and are experts at what they do. So we have Kathy Jenkins, who is a parent here. She's also on our advisory board for biomed. She works at Crettonton Hospital. She is a rehab nurse there. We have Dan Gahr, I know a lot of people are familiar with Dan Gahr. He is at Health West and he comes in and trains our physical therapy team. We have Dr. Sarah Tamaka. We're really proud of her because she is an Oxford graduate. So she comes, she gives back her time and she works at North Oakland Dental Group. We have the Oxford Fire Department who trains our EMT team and they are, they've been wonderful with us because they, every single one of our teams made it to states this year. So they made it to the next level. And what's impressive about this is that they competed against teams that actually have an EMT program. And so Oxford beat them out, a lot of them out, and made it to states and a lot of those kids didn't because Oxford kids are awesome. And the Oxford Fire Department is awesome too. So Jordan Pazinski, I'm really proud of her also. She is an Oxford grad and she trains our vet team. Our vet team got first, second, and third place. So she's actually just, I think last week she found out that she did get into vet school. So we're proud of her. She started, she was actually our first biomed, she was in our first biomed program. So she is going to be a vet in the future. So, and of course we know Andrew McDonald. He's our athletic trainer and he trains the sports medicine guys. So it really is an Oxford community effort. So it's not just mine, this is Oxford's team. So, and also with the leadership events, I do have a lot of the teachers come in and they do run-throughs. So if they're going to present their presentation, then sometimes we call it a think tank. And the think tank would be if the kids are struggling and they think, well, this is our prompt, but we don't know how to put our presentation together, then I get a bunch of pictures together on a Wednesday morning and we set up a think tank and we just like, just start getting ideas down, like a brainstorming session. And it really helps the kids to go through the process of putting something together. So again, I just mentioned these guys specifically, but we have a lot of Oxford staff that also helps out the leadership kids. So about these leadership conferences, we have, regionals is more localized. So our regional competition was at Farmington Hills and it was December 3rd and we had about, I don't know, about 500 people compete. And we took 80 kids and 60 made it to the next level. So to make it to the next level, you have to be in the top 10. So 60 of those kids made it to the state leadership conference, which will be, in the future will be April 27th and April 28th. And then the top three of those students will compete at our international leadership conference, which is June 21st to June, so that's in June, to June 24th. And so last year we had, Jordan went to nationals in physical therapy. We had our CERT team go. The year before we had our CERT team go, I think that was it. So this year, every year we get stronger and stronger. So this year we hope to send more kids to nationals and we hope to send Jordan back to nationals also. So, and I'm not going to read off this list, but I just wanted you to get an appreciation for all of the Oxford students and how well they placed. So these are the top three. So we have Brooke Boger got first place in veterinary science. We have Sarah Schaefer, she's here today. She got second place in veterinary science. Maddie McClure, nursing assistant. So we just have a lot of students who place in the top three, which is, of course, we're really proud of. But in addition to that, we have all of these students who placed in the top 10. And so we are sending a lot of kids to states. So we don't just want to, I want to teach them the skill, but the health science field is also about giving back to the community. Well, it's a helping field is what I'm saying. But so we try and adopt some community service projects. So last year we worked with the Children's Leukemia Foundation. This year we actually adopted a family and it was a woman who is, she's a very young single mother of two children and one has leukemia. And she doesn't have a job because she has to take her kids to, she has to take her one son constantly to the chemotherapy sessions. So I, we signed up to bring in a present for her two boys. She has a three and a four-year-old and the four-year-old is the one that has leukemia. And so we brought a lot of presents in, the kids brought a lot of presents in. We wrapped them up. We had one of our students dress up like Santa and we drove to her house and we dropped them off. And his name is AJ and she made that sign for us. And I should have shown you the pictures because when we first got there, the kids were really shy and then as soon as they left, they were like, "Oh my God, Daniel was just here." And their eyes were like wide. It was just very, very special that they saw the other side of medicine, that it's not always glamorous. Then it's not always that, you know, you get to wear scrubs and stuff. So, and she did tell us her story because I wanted them to understand what they were getting into. And then this Saturday we did the cutest fundraiser. We called it the Doc McStuffins Clinic in Mini Med School and it was very, very well attended. I would say 90 people came in. And Doc McStuffins is this character who is a, well, I call her a toyologist, but she's a little character, she's a cartoon character. And she fixes toys. So we told the kids, "Bring in your toys and our HOSA kids will do a checkup like Doc McStuffins." So the kids brought in a stuffed animal or a toy and we did a checkup. And, but what we're really doing is showing them what to expect at the doctor's office. So I had them explain what they were doing in terms that they can understand. And it's a good way for them to practice their patient interaction skills. And we wanted to demystify what it's like to go to the doctor and explain, you know, why, what a vaccination is and that it doesn't hurt that bad. I mean, it really does, but, but it's a work where they know. So, and so then we had these little mini med schools. We called it little mini med school. And so we did some crafts and activities with the kids. They got little doctor's coats. You can see the, so that one kid has a little doctor's coat. And they made little stethoscopes and then they got a certificate saying they graduated from HOSA Mini Med School. And then they could, they worked at the vet clinic. So I think these kids are working at the vet clinic. And then, and then, or a toy clinic. So it was really, really cute. So the kids had fun, we had fun. It was well-attended. I feel like it was a win-win. We also made a lot of money, which is all going towards states. So then about cover zid, I say, oh. And then I wanted to show you a quick video of our experience last year. So we're still working on our experiences for this year, but this is our experience for last year. Okay, so before we go into the next part of our presentation, does anyone have any questions about HOSA and what we do? So the next part I wanted to do, and we can make this real quick, is I wanted the kids to show you exactly what skill they do. Because a lot of people think, "Well, what do you do when you do HOSA?" So I have several students up there that, we have the EMT team, we have the vet team. And so what I was planning on doing is they could, we could kind of go around the room and we can have the kids go around the room and you guys could go up to them and we could break up into groups and they could show you what, what the skill it is that they're learning. So why don't you guys kind of like line up along the side with your team? Okay. Like along the side of your, okay. And then, and then you can get up and walk around because we wanted this to be interactive so that, so that you can actually learn. So what I'm going to have them do is show you your skill. So do you want to, do you want them to show you the skill or do you want to learn the skill that they're doing? Because we were planning on having you, having them teach you the skill, but we didn't realize that it was going to be such a big audience. Why don't we have, would you mind if you just showed your skill to them instead of them? Okay, we'll do it that way because that'll be quicker. Okay, so let's start with the EMT team. Okay. Okay, so, okay, so yeah, we'll introduce yourselves. What's your name?
Hi, I'm Danny Mitchell.
And I'm Ashley Grant. And you know, I'm on the EMT team. So our skill is blood loss control. So we're going to be using a homemade tourniquet to stop that. So Danny's going to put that on her.
So in this case, Ashley would have bleeding below this point in her arm. So we have to stop the blood flow from going down. So we would take a piece of cloth and tie it pretty tight. We don't want to hurt her, but we don't want any more blood coming through. And then we would tie, we would put a pencil there and tie another knot. And then we would twist it until the blood stopped coming.
Yep.
She's crying right now.
Use your other arm.
Okay.
Well, that's real chip.
Yeah.
I'm going to be drawing this picture.
Okay, perfect, alright.
I'm on the sports medicine this year, so instead of doing a hand, it's unsealed tape and it's not going to be quite as short as there is. Sorry. Sorry, I wasn't planning on it being such a rushed kind of thing.
Don't feel rushed. This is good, it's good.
Can you verbalize what you're doing?
What are you putting on right now?
Yeah, right now it's applying the under wrap. They don't always have to have this. Normally we use it on men just because they don't shave their legs.
What do you mean, "We don't shave our legs"?
Just in scenarios where people have skin allergies, so like, some people have latex allergies, kind of avoid putting any latex on their skin. We're going to apply the first two layers so that anchors, these are the two points we're going to reference throughout the table.
And what's the reason you're doing this?
Gives you a basis to go back to if you ever get into a situation where you don't know exactly where to put the tape.
No, no, no. Does she have a sprained ankle or is...
Yeah, sorry. In this situation, Maddie has a sprained ankle. I'm going to be applying the tape from internally to exterior, like exterior, given a situation where she has interior ankle sprain.
But normally they would be given a scenario. So they would be given a scenario where they would tell them what's wrong with the patient and they would have to decide what to do.
So we're going to start with the stirrups that go through the top sootier ankle all the way around. And then you pull a layer down to cover the tape, kind of preventing it from coming off. You do it two more times to add up to a total of three. Each time you're going to move the tape closer to the inside of her foot. Once the three stirrups are applied, you start at the top of the foot. You're going to do like a, it's called the heel lock. You start around, you go around the heel, around the top of the ankle, and back around from the inside up to the top. This helps prevent heel stability, which basically keeps the ankle from turning inside when it's sprained. After that, you go into the figure eight motion is what it's called. You start at the top of the foot, come around the bottom, up around, back down, around the bottom of the foot, up to the top. From there, you'd normally complete a second by everything that Maddie has an interior ankle sprain. I'm going to just get that stuff because she needs the support coming in, or coming out instead of in. In some situations, given like a football player, an athlete that needs more protection, you apply more layers to cover up the tape, giving them more room to kind of flex their foot. And then Maddie, I'm going to let you cut it off. So does the shark.
I don't want to get that tourniquet.
It's got a shark raised blade in the center and then it's coated with materials, plastic, so it's basically impossible to cut your foot open unless like, you're really good at cutting feet, I'm not sure. You're going to apply it from the outside, you're going to come around to the inside ankle bone and just... Yeah, I've got it for my own, I'll just do it. Come in the inside, back down. Top, and then sometimes you might rip the rest of it.
So you wanted you... Okay. How about the vet team?
So what we're going to demonstrate is the preparation of an operative site. So normally the patient would be shaved and scrubbed with an antiseptic solution, like an iodized solution. Be a good example of it. So right now what she's doing is she is, would normally be using an antiseptic wash, but for cases simplicity, we're using hand sanitizer. And then we would be using surgical gloves, but we're using exam gloves. So the patient would be laying on his back with his legs taped down.
Is the patient sedated at this point?
Yes. He's not down.
It's really sedated.
Right, it's very quick.
And the main key in this, in this operation is that the whole thing is very sterile and you need to keep the operative site very clean. So it's a very precise procedure and making sure nothing is dirty or unsterile.
So normally everything in this situation would be sterile. Gauze would be sterile, cordial would be sterile, every single thing.
So these are gauze sponges and these are going to be used to clean the operative site. You remove them from their packaging and then this would be a sterile solution to clean the gauze. So sponges in them. And then once they are soaked, transfer the gauze from one hand to the other. And you just clean the abdomen in this case. And you move the gauze sponge in outward circular motions because once the sponge has touched a part of the dog, you don't want it to go back and touch another spot because it is considered dirty. And you just go like that and repeat this process three times. Just outward motions. And you want to clean about two inches away from where the incision will be, just to be safe. And then once that is done, there can be some extra residue. Now you can clean sponge, just pop the excess off, again moving in and outward motion. And then this isn't the case in all surgeries, but some surgeries will decide to pour an iodine solution on the operative site just to make it a little bit easier to identify where the incision is going to be made. So somebody's able to pour a little bit of iodine on there that's soaked the spur. And after that, patient is pretty much as far as surgery. Yeah.
And you anticipate a full recovery?
Oh, yes.
He looks like he's back to his usual.
So next we have our nursing team. Maddie's also our president.
So at the patient notes, we competed in nursing assisting, but at states we're going to do clinical nursing. And basically for clinical nursing, we learn how to do the injections, taking someone's heart rate on their finger. And we also gave them how to do a catheter, which is actually my favorite.
Wow.
Because it's actually the easiest. But at regionals, we learned how to transfer a patient and change their gown, but we're going to just transfer that from this turn to this turn. And we're going to use a needle. And then when you're ready to transfer the patient, you're going to make sure your knees are outside of theirs in case they fall, you have, you catch them. You make sure the knee belt's tight enough where just your four fingers can fit in, but it's also not hurting them. And then you say on the count of three, we're going to move to the other chair. One, two, three. Now, obviously it can help you a little bit, but when you take it off. And then make sure the patient is okay before we leave.
So next we'll do our physical therapy and then we'll finalize with our faculty.
Maddie, what are you going to do?
Oh, okay.
So my name is Daphne Fireman and I have at, is physical therapy. So I'm going to be, so for states I did like many practices and... So I'm going to be, so for Stakes I did like, um, like many practices and all different types of like walking devices. But, um, for, like, that was a regional, for Stakes I'm doing range of motions, testing all the different, like, movements of the legs and arms and everything. So I'm going to be testing the range of motion of Maddie's hip today. So first I, like, say hello when you step me. So just check she's my patient and everything. So first I'd be like, I'm going to be testing the range of motion of your hip. And then first I'm going to start off with flexion. So you're going to bring, make sure that she's very comfortable and she's not in pain at all. And bring her knee to her chest as far as it can go. And then we'll bring it back into extension, extension. And then next we're retesting the abduction, adduction of the hip. So this is going to bring you to abduction, and then adduction. And then lastly, it's going to be lateral and medial. So we're going to bend the knee, and then bring it into lateral, and then medial. So just basically checking that your patient's all good, like, no injuries, everything's pain-free, so, yeah.
And then last we have our dental team.
Okay, I'm Kealan.
And I'm Caitlin. And so for Reginals, one of our skills was to teach a patient how to properly brush and floss. And so this is called the type dot, and this is what we've used. The one at Reginals was a lot bigger than that. This is the idea. And so I would start by introducing myself, so I'm Kealan, and then I would open this if it would open. We'll just pretend. And then I would get my gloves. And make sure that they're on and there's no holes. And then I would get out my floss and the toothbrush. And so then I would instruct the patient that you would start by taking the toothbrush and placing it at a 45-degree angle so that it hits both the top and the side of the tooth. And you would do that for a count of 10. And then you keep moving around and hitting each spot for a count of 10. So you just keep doing that around and the same on the top. And then I would say that you would take out, on our sheets it says 18 inches, but it's just a rough estimate. And you wrap it around your middle finger. And then when you're flossing the bottom teeth, you push down with your index fingers, making sure to do a sawing motion, but also put it in a form of a C around each tooth. And you go around. And I would also instruct the patient that it doesn't matter where you start as long as you get all the teeth. And it's kind of repetitive, but you just go around. And I would also tell the patient that it's important not to push too hard, that you would break the gums in between each of the teeth, but to also push hard enough so that it actually cleans. So I would go all the way around on the bottom, and then once you get to the top, I could also push with either my thumbs or index. I'd do that all the way around. And then I would take off the floss. I would properly, properly get rid of that. And then I'd take off my gloves. And that's, yeah.
And then what we had to do at Reginals was all of these marked pages. We had to memorize the tools. I knew them and know how to spell them and know the proper use for them. And then at Reginals, they gave us 10 random tools from this whole, like, selection. And we had like, it was like a spelling test basically, and then we had to write down the proper use of them too.
Okay, so does anyone have, we're done, so does anyone have any questions about HOSA and what we do? You can see now why our kids do so well. They are the tops in Oxford, I feel like, halfway.
Dan, if I could, I'd like to do a little addition to this here.
Please.
Some of you may or may not know that I am also the president of the Oxford Athletic Boosters Association. And every year for as long as I've been involved, we've done a fundraiser where we do low-cost physicals to Oxford athletes in the school. In the last two years, the HOSA program has joined in and helped us with it. And the primary goal for the boosters to do it is to pay for the concussion testing that all of our athletes get. So we, they helped us again last year with this fundraiser. And I would like to introduce one of the executive board members of the boosters, Laura Armbruster, who's going to come down. And we have a little present for the HOSA team here. So Ms. Petrus could please go up front with Ms. Armbruster.
As Mark stated, that we did do a physical, um, low-cost physicals for the athletes. That was directly, um, right, we break to our athletic department. HOSA was a pivotal part of that, along with Dr. Michael Zarnata. He was the impact specialist, who coordinated the baseline data that was gathered with the help of Andrew McDonald. And we, our board felt overwhelmingly that the surplus funds that we accrued from the fundraiser would be given back to HOSA. And so thank you for helping us for a very well-run event. We can't promise that, that in the future we would have the same surplus of funds, but at this time, on behalf of the Oxford Wildcat Boosters, we are happy to donate $300 to HOSA. I would love to give you guys your next competitions as well.
Well, we really appreciate that. Thank you very, very much.
Just to show us how different organizations in our school can work together and everybody can benefit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate them. Well, we appreciate them.
We are looking forward and we're quite confident that you will all do well. So good luck in, um, in compete, but also have fun. Because you'll, you'll, you'll look back at it maybe four or five years from now and say, it was good to know, it was good to compete, but we also had fun with each other, so that's an important aspect to it too. And thank you, Mark, and the Booster Club. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you. Okay, item five, Board of Education Matters. We have item A, Superintendent Evaluation Training, and item B, Board of Education Code of Ethics Document. They were both in your packet, the document was in there. Do we have the actual one to sign or do we?
No, I was waiting for you to put it if you want to change.
Okay, alright.
So maybe under the first item, Dan, uh, by the time everyone responded, our trainer was already filled. And so we went ahead and March 21st was a already scheduled meeting. That evening is when we will do the evaluation training. So March 21st. Really the only things we need to know tonight, beyond giving you the date, is that it's roughly about a three-hour training or so. So the question is, do you want to move up the meeting from starting at 6:30? Would you rather start at 6:00 or 5:30, or do you want, prefer to keep it at 6:30? It's, it's really at the board's discretion when you, when you guys want to start.
So March 21st of this year?
Correct.
So that was a regularly scheduled work session as, as a work?
Actually, it was a first quarterly review session, and so we're just going to use that, that schedule one.
Okay. Is there any reason that you all would feel we need to move it up a half hour or just grind through it and add it to the end of the day? We're going to, a half hour either way. We're either going to put it in front or we're going to put it in the back. So, you don't want to start at 6:30?
Well, that's when we normally start.
Correct. But I guess what Tim is asking, would you rather move it up a half hour?
I would so.
I would so.
Move it up a half hour?
Six o'clock.
Yeah, we had.
Yep, do the six.
Okay, thank you. Six o'clock, then.
And, um, Pat, can you make sure that Jenny's aware?
Yes.
And then the second question is just, since it's going to be a longer evening, do you want us to prepare any food that night or anything like that?
Uh, is it going to be at the board office?
Correct.
I think what we'll do is rather than have food prepared and brought in, and I think what we'll do is maybe we'll just, grab pizza and everybody throw in a couple dollars and grab pizza, that way there's no additional expense. We can do that.
That's fine.
We have a two-piece evaluation training, I agree with something, I don't know, maybe you think, is there like a two-piece training or just one?
Just one.
Just one.
I thought you were going to ask if it's a two-piece minimum.
Well, is here?
We're right next to nap so we can send out.
Okay, um, there is a, there is a motion to, for the superintendent evaluation document on the table. Mr. Schweig?
Moved to approve the use of superintendent evaluation document that is provided by MASB as the instrument for evaluating the superintendent for 2017.
Support, Mr. Steppich? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So maybe before you move on, Dan, just under the Board of Education Code of Ethics, was there any changes, any modifications that any of the board members wanted?
Not, not any changes, but a question I would have is, we have in our board policies, our guidelines, Board Member Ethics 0144.2. Anybody familiar with it?
Who do you want to?
Yes, that's what I was going to say. It's, it's, it's a, I think this is, and I just get an idea of what other board members feel, how this is, I guess, coordinated with our leadership statement. Because we do have this, and it says, Board Member Ethics, I'll just paraphrase some of it. As members of the Board of Education, board members will strive to improve public education, and to that end will, and there's sections A through H, and briefly, A, attend all regularly scheduled board meetings. B, recognize that they should endeavor to make policy decisions only after full discussion at publicly held board meetings. C, render all decisions based on available facts and independent judgment. D, encourage the free expression of opinion by all board members, and seek systematic communications between the board and students, staff, and all elements of the community. E, work with other board members to establish effective board policies, and to delegate authority for the administration of the district to the superintendent. F, communicate to other board members and the superintendent expressions of public reaction to board policies and school programs. G, inform themselves about current educational issues by individual study and participation in programs. And H, support the employment of those persons best qualified to serve as school staff in interest on a regular and impartial evaluation. So basically, those are the areas that we're looking at, that we have. And I'm not sure if these are, Pat, our guidelines or if this is our actual policy.
Those are your bylaws.
So just to show that, you know, we have this code of leadership and then we have these board of members, board member ethics expectations too.
Any further discussion of that to come back? Okay. Alright. Item six, Curriculum and Instruction, Mr. Weaver, Oxford Cup Presentation.
Yeah, if you recall back in the fall, um, we were, or I was tasked with looking at the Oxford Cup procedures and guidelines, um, and that obviously involves the high school. And so we had Mr. Dunkley and Mr. Noos, I and myself, set up a small committee and began to look at the procedures and what had happened in the past, where we were, what had brought us to this point. And then trying to then get some consensus as to what should be the procedures for awarding the Oxford Cup going forward. So I'm going to turn the time over to Mr. Dunkley and Mr. Noos at this time to, I guess, short presentation. Describe the process and what came up. Okay, take it away.
So as Mr. Weaver had said, we had gotten together earlier last fall, talked about how we wanted to proceed. We knew that discussion had surfaced since 2011 when it was a change in the longstanding tradition. But like all things, we should review after some time period. And staff always loves to have the opportunity for input. We had discussed at that time, put together people definitely that varied from ranges of age, timeline staff, I should say, and different, uh, different sections of the staff, as well as past award winners. As you see the dates next to some folks up there, those are past recipients of the cup. And the decade, you can see clearly, there were four different decades. All of them gave input. One person, and Mr. Noos will touch on this, was unable to actually attend meetings, but gave input throughout. So that was the committee we selected. Then we talked about, in the next slide, we talked about how we would proceed throughout the entire process. On the first side there, under items to consider, we definitely knew gender would be the number one topic we'd want to discuss. You know, male, female. The eligibility, we knew that things have changed over the years. This award first was given in 1930 and a couple things have evolved since then. So the enrollment status, we knew we had, today we have acceded students, we had online students, we have early college students, and we have some other things that have surfaced politically that we need to take a peek at. Academic ranking, we have always stayed with one standing of top 100 class. We know we want to review that as well. And then we need to look at the discipline. Do we allow students with any type of discipline to be counted or not? And we knew that needed to be considered. And the voting process had on its own probably over the years adjusted itself with different staff, different administration. And we wanted to make sure that we looked at how students were actually voted upon, which included how things were counted, weighted, and the number of candidates that were voted upon. So the process we chose, of course, word for word too, but we wanted to start with the committee. A meeting, we wanted to get some staff, tell them about it, get a survey from them, bring it back to the committee for, for their input from what the staff said. And then of course we wanted to update everyone and, and get approval, which is where we're at today, bringing it back to, to you, the board. Mr. Noos is going to, before the final slides, go through all the data that was collected. And we'll take, watch us through all if you wish, but we'd prefer if you could hold off until the end.
So as part of our committee development, it's tasked with trying to find former winners. We wanted at least four from four different decades because we wanted a smattering. Also was able to talk with many who moved out of state, A, get some of their thoughts, so they were, that information was also brought to the committee. We held our meet, first meeting in October. We started talking about the issues, what staff feedback were, was at the time because they knew we were forming that committee. The staff members that you saw previously had sought some information from staff members, their colleagues, on, hey, what were some of their thoughts? And we had a great two and a half, it was intended to be about an hour meeting, we had a great about two, two and a half hour meeting about what the issues were. There was consensus on quite a few of the issues, but there was a little bit more, they wanted more discussion clarity because the vote, so to speak, on that first meeting, it was more of a vote, hey, hey, where are we? And a lot of people were comfortable on those closer things where there was some debate to get some staff input. So we put together a survey, had a staff discussion at our next professional development meeting, and had a brief discussion about what some of the issues were, what some of the input at the committee was, what the history was, and then seeking some input. And then we put out a survey, it was just simply a three-question survey about some of those more contentious issues because we really wanted to make sure that we had everybody on board. We then brought that survey back to the committee in December, early December. The committee then built, it wasn't really a vote the second time, it was more of a consensus building, talking it out. And A, this is what we're comfortable with. Members who weren't there, we were able to call, like Susan. Uh, members who weren't there, we were able to call, uh, like Susan Doyle, Susan Fazini, uh, wasn't able to make votes, so I had long conversations with her and several of them, and then relaying the information back and forth. Uh, then we brought it back to staff with the recommendation that Todd's gonna share with you in a little bit. And then, uh, we kinda got their, uh, their support. Hey, can you just, hey, testify, how can you support the recommendation? And the vast majority were fours or fives, uh, that they were comfortable with moving forward. So, uh, the staff then put the two major questions, uh, that we asked the staff to respond to. Uh, the minimum amount of years a student should be enrolled as a high school student. Uh, that used to be way back when, and when it was started in, now, eight, or nineteen oh five, really nineteen thirty, was, Oxford was a, uh, fairly small school. When I started here twenty-four years ago, we only had a hundred-some students. Uh, we've grown considerably, and everybody at the time really spent four years here. Now, our students move in and out. Uh, we have different types of students. So, uh, to add, it's an Oxford High School Award. How many years should they be, uh, contributors of the Oxford High School community? Should there be the minimum? Uh, and you see the results there. Uh, fifty-five percent, which actually represents forty-one of the staff members, seventy-five staff members, seventy-four staff members voted on this one. Uh, so forty-one said they should be there for at least three years. Uh, twenty-three percent said four years, and twenty-one percent said, uh, two years. Uh, so they really wanted to make sure they were contributing members. Uh, one of the issues that the three and the four was what if a student moved? Because we've had, had students who spent their freshman year here, they moved for a family job or whatever overseas for one particular case, and then moved back, but they were in Oxford their entire career, other than that one year, and we didn't want to disadvantage that student. Uh, that was very consistent with kind of the, the committee recommendations too. Uh, the next one is the big one. Oxford Cup should be awarded to how many winners annually? Uh, up until two thousand and twelve, uh, the Oxford Cup was the, was, uh, the, basically, depending on the year, it was either the top half, and then it grew, then it was the top one hundred students. Uh, staff would vote, juniors would vote, seniors would vote, and it would be the top one. If it was a tie, then there would be two. So ten years from nineteen thirty on, uh, there were ties, uh, so there had two. Uh, in two thousand and twelve, uh, that was switched to one male and one female. And, uh, so one of the parts of the committee was, should that continue? Fifty-six percent said, uh, male and a female, forty-three percent said one, it was seventy, seventy-four responses. So numbers-wise, forty-two, uh, of our staff members thought there should be one male and one female, and thirty-two said, uh, just one. The other issue, the other open-ended question was, uh, what type of discipline, uh, should be considered? Uh, and then we had staff, uh, no, sorry, uh, any other considerations? And discipline was brought up on many, uh, many of our staff responses. So, uh, our ultimate recommendations, when we took that back to the committee, uh, and then took it back to the staff, uh, is, uh, the rewording of, a slight rewording of the Oxford Cup description, and then Todd will talk about what the criteria are that was, was our recommendation that we bring forward.
So, most of that language is the same. There's really two changes that stand out since the inception in nineteen thirty, and that's the male and female wording being added in there. And then, and that second to last line where it says, "well-balanced develop", it seems at least sort of apparent that it was an athlete by nature, the way it talked about physical physique in the original description, and over time, that has not always been the case as an athlete. So we changed it to "well-balanced development", which was what people were doing anyway for a lot of years. And those are the only two changes in the overall wording since its inception. So, here is, uh, as we go through, you see the three years that people talked about. That's three years here at Oxford for students to qualify. We now, of course, have our early college program. The early college program is a five-year program. To equate things, we said that we're gonna have the early college students up to fourth year, which we equate them as a senior for four years, and the Oxford High School students, with the majority of the work for, oh, what's that, being three years as well as three years for high school students.
Before you go, I think it's important, because some people may not know, we have a percentage of OSEC students that are ceded OHS students for the vast majority of their career, and then we have some who are more virtual on the oversight, uh, that really never step foot inside of Oxford. So, since those students were contributing, they plan our teams, they, uh, are in our classes, they join our plays, they're part of our community, we did not want to exclude them.
Thank you for that. Uh, so, to be eligible, students must have been subject to significant discipline, including suspension. That will be a review by the building principal at the time, uh, to make determination of how significant that, that pass was. And there will be one male winner, and there will be one female winner, uh, each year. And then finally.
Uh, again, before we move, uh, the discipline piece is strong from the committee and from staff. There should be no suspensions whatsoever.
Yeah.
Because this is an exclusive award, so that was, uh, pretty clear.
Yeah. So, the three-three percent is a third. So you're going to take by scholarship, by academic standing, the top third OHS ceded students, and the top third, fourth-year OSEC students will be placed on the ballot every year. And so, um, that will be as far as top third male, top third female. So that, the, the numbers may not be the same for each of those two categories, for OHS and OSEC. And then the eligible voters will be, be the staff, there'll be the seniors that are OHS, which equates to also the fourth-year OSEC students, and the third-year OSEC students and the juniors will be the voters. They will vote for three candidates, male, three candidates, female. Each will count as one point in that original round. Then all those are polled in, and they're tallying with a weight. And then you see in the bottom, here's how the weight is distributed. The staff vote for the overall ratios will count as fifty percent of the overall count. The fourth-year OSEC and the seniors will be thirty cent, thirty percent, and the third-year OSEC and juniors will be twenty percent. At that point in time, for the past several years, we've used digital, I think we've used edgy ballot the last few years, for students to go and vote. They vote, uh, mostly through lunchtime, but it is a large percentage, like the majority of students vote, and almost all staff vote. And the principal will oversee, and I know Mike did that for years before I did, Ken, I think you were part of that, and I have the last few years, and that is as secret as a ballot as you'll ever see. I don't tell anybody. Uh, Ms. Beasley always tries to sneak a peek, because we're carrying award into graduation.
Yes.
But, uh, nobody knows, uh, until graduating, and I have hung onto that, those ballots for three to four months afterwards. In case there were questions. What do you have for questions now?
Can you give us an idea how many thirty-three percent is?
So we have, let's say we have approximately four hundred students, that's what we approximately will have. I mean, we have a little bit less this year, a little bit more. And then, let's say they're half and half, so two hundred and thirty-three percent, sixty-six males, sixty-six. If they're, you know, if everything's perfect.
So around.
Right around sixty-six, between sixty and seventy, correct.
I think, first of all, excellent procedure and process for all of you that, and how you did this. I, there are so many issues to address, and you did an excellent job with it. My question I have is, on, to be eligible, students must not have been subject to significant discipline, including suspension. Is that, like, have you, clearing your mind what significant is?
Well, we had discussed that they would not be suspended for any, um, day suspensions. So like, if a kid got removed in their freshman year for a class or two, or they were having a rough moment or that, we didn't want that to be eligible except. But it was basically felt that from the teachers, from getting their input, the committee, that it really should be, because we had a pretty serious discussion on that, it should be pretty much no, no suspensions for the most part. So it was, we left a little bit gray, because there's, you know, kids are growing, there's, you know, there's that development issue, and we wanted to be somewhat, so where there was a need to be the discretion for the principal.
If they were suspended for a day, that normally will disqualify them. Would that be, like, out of school?
Yes.
Yeah. And all I'm saying is, is just be, and I'm glad that you're, you have that in there, just so that you know exactly what it means, so that kids know that if you're out of school suspended, that's it. It's not somebody goes, "Oh, it's kind of significant, but not really significant", but that would give a clear-cut way to do it. Because I just don't want to see, and I know how this adds up in administration, where you have to make, uh, somewhat of a subjective opinion, just keep it all objective, and that way.
Knowing that, gray, we might not be able to write now. If I might show up, and so just put a clear-cut writing, that was what Mr. Weaver was saying, gave a woodroom, but I can't even think of those examples right now.
Right, okay. Now, I think it's an excellent process, the procedure, and it certainly addresses all of the concerns that I've ever heard about in myself too.
Yeah, basically the discipline was, they, no one-day suspensions, nothing that were a day or more.
Out of school.
Out of school.
Was there any thought, consideration into, maybe as a freshman? Yeah, I just, I think sometimes kids, their first year of high school, don't really know what they can, can't get away with, and they do something that.
So, so to play devil's advocate, well, what if this, what if you play all the scenarios you had, right? And overwhelmingly, hey, this is the top award that we give. So, this, the standard is high, the standard is high. Doesn't mean you can't graduate, doesn't mean you're not honored and everything, you're just excluded from the.
And, and a point on that, what Mr. Noos is saying, I've not seen this award anywhere else. When schools hear this, I mean, there's some schools get some pretty neat awards. When they hear about this, everyone goes, "That is the best award I've ever heard of."
When Jennifer received this last year, I mean, which is one of our practice moments in an Oxford family. It just means so much to us to, to get this award. And I think I can speak for Jenny Guthrie, whose daughter was recognized as one of the top five. Will that still be consideration at commencement to introduce how many kids at commencement?
I think we had talked still, recognizing the top five.
We had, I, I don't remember what you used to do. I chose to do that because I thought they should get recognition. We don't have it written. I can't imagine anybody not carrying that on, but I can't speak for that.
Yeah, we didn't really address that as like a direct, I mean, this is a requirement, but I would imagine just as, uh.
I think it's just a great tradition.
Well, precedent, and you get to honor kids, and, uh, it's a great moment. It also adds to that drum roll moment too, right?
And I can vouch for Todd not telling anyone who wins.
So if anybody forgets the Oxford Cup, it's not my fault. That's a high stress for Mike before and Todd. That is heavily guarded.
Do you have any thoughts of staff who might not know the kids well enough to vote? Like, if I'm a new staff member, like, you know, you have a three-year eligibility requirement that you didn't ask for for three years for a student to be eligible. Do you feel like the staff knows the kids well enough, even after only being here for a few months? They have an idea who rises to the top when they see the kids?
Well, we have staff, we have staff, so, like, even just for the survey, I had several staff, look, this is my first year. I'm, I'm not, you know, so we have eighty-some staff members, there were some who didn't, and we had a great turnout of seventy-four, seventy-five, that they didn't, because they know the significance of it, so they just excluded themselves. We don't force anybody to vote.
Same with, like, an NHS selection, they say, "I have been there long enough".
Plus, you're talking about the cream of the crop, and you're a member of staff, especially at a high school, and I was for several years in that, just as a teacher, and I was in a much even bigger school than, uh, our school presently is, and you knew who the top kids were. There was no question, so.
When you took this back to your committee, how did they respond? Like, I know the staff did all the surveys, and you met with the former winners. How did the staff, how did those other people on the committee feel about your recommendation?
They were part of the recommendation.
They were part, they, they voted to recommend.
They worked, yeah, they worked in concert with the staff. We kind of went back and forth between the two. So that's, and got the, the staff's input, and when the committee was, like, making the recommendations, we could take the recommendations to the staff, got their input on them, and then came back.
Okay.
The, the questions to the staff were actually generated by the members of committee outside of us, and like the votes, like Todd and I, I don't think you voted, devoted for the, and the staff survey, because we were on the committee and wanted the.
All right, thanks for clarifying.
It was actually the committee that suggested that we go to, it wasn't us, it was the committee that said, "Hey, why don't we get the staff input on this issue and this issue and so on."
Thank you for clarifying, great work.
I'd just like to thank you guys. This, this, that great presentation, I think it's, you know, the wonderful thing that we do, and needed, needed to be cleaned up. Thank you for doing it on a thorough job.
Thank you. Thank you, Curtis. Excellent.
Thank you.
Just a quick, uh, point of interest, um, next problem, so I will be presenting on the scorecard for our schools. So I will have a presentation on acting, plus our annual education reports have, uh, will be coming public here another week or so. Uh, we will not, I should say, they give us a window in which to post them. We won't be posting them in a week. We've gotta get them prepared, they post, they post home the education reports. Uh, they were supposed to be out like last December, um, but now we're gonna be seeing them at the end of January. So, we'll be coming to, um, the curriculum department well with the presentation about the scorecard and the education reports. And just also a heads up, I'm reminding Mr. Throne, we do have the health unit we have to schedule. Um, but we, we also have revamped the health reproduction unit, which is a, um, sensitive unit. Um, and so we want to get your input on that, and so we're gonna have to schedule a public hearing, which is gonna have to be an additional board meeting, um, so that we can have a public hearing as well as getting word put as part of the public on that, um, curriculum. Um, it's quite a process for that, so just gonna give you a heads up, and then I'm sure Mr. Throne will work with you self that way.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Item seven, finance and operations. Mr. Barman.
On the agenda tonight, we have the night lock classroom security, uh, devices that we spoke about, uh, at length at the last board meeting. And so, you know, since then, we've done some further research, and, um, Trustee Schaefer actually yesterday joined us at DA, uh, along with Mr. Boyd, Tony Sarkin's and myself. Uh, she had a few questions, and, uh, also we, uh, looked at a couple of examples, um, of some doors in DA that obviously this would be applied to. And so, um, I don't know, Heather, if you wanted to share anything of what you learned yesterday, that's up to you, but, uh, I thought it was a good, I thought it was a good morning, so.
It really was. Um, it was a great review of what we have, and what I really wanted to gather, and the reason I did this is because I really wanted to understand what we currently had as a security program in our buildings, and what value add the current night lock program would give us. And in turn, what security that would really allow us to offer to our families and to our children. Um, I think the question is, is, do we really want to provide added security to our building? I, I think obviously we do. We all want our kids to be safe. I think the quality of these lock systems is a great quality lock system. Tony walked me through how they would work, how they would be installed. Um, I think it's a good quality product. I don't know that that is really addressing the issue of security. We're looking at multiple buildings in the district, because I ended up going to a couple more, um, just on my own. The problem is, is the, is are our entryways secure? Once somebody with a destructive intention enters our building, it doesn't matter what lock we have on the door, it doesn't matter if we have two locks or ten locks. They will do whatever they, they will try and do whatever they're intended to do, as horrific as that is. So, I don't think it's just a lock system that we really need to think about. I think it might be a bigger picture. Um, in visiting Lakeville today, I, I stopped in there, I, I had something to do for basketball for my son who plays there, and I was talking to Donna over there, and, so they at least have a buzzer system. They at least have an opportunity to not allow someone to enter the building. Unfortunately, I think that's one of our only elementary buildings that does that. Um, my home building, DA, which I spend a lot of time at, has a horrible blind spot. Everybody in that office would just be wiped out. It's like a twelve-foot corridor before they, and, and, uh, the secretary, Jenny and I did a couple just sit-throughs where I sat at her desk, and she went in and out the door, and she said, "Do you know how many times I came in?" And I said, "No", I couldn't hear her, because the way the hallway is. So, um, I think it's a good quality system. I do. I think it's, it's a good piece of hardware, and I think it could offer classroom security, if that's what we're looking at. I just need, that's, that was my, that was what I felt that I gained from the knowledge of speaking with Tony, looking at the doors myself, looking at the buildings, walking through the buildings, looking at the entrances. That's, that's the homework that I did. So that's what I wanted to share.
Thank you. I know back in the bond, uh, we addressed safe and secure entrances for all the buildings. I think a lot of that was, um, designed, uh, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but, when they were all designed, they were designed with stopping somebody from getting past a certain point, so that they could not get to, I shouldn't say could not get, so they minimized the time they could get from that point to the classrooms.
I think all of the buildings in the last bond were designed to force all, all people coming from the outside world into one area, the main office. It was like a funnel. Before, when you opened the front office, you had multiple ways of gaining access into that building. And so, the, from my recollection, the, the main requirement in the last bond was to stop all of that and force everybody into the main office before proceeding into the rest of the building. And so, um, uh, I hear what you're saying Heather and I certainly appreciate that. I think that, you know, as time goes on, we can certainly look at, okay, now that we're forcing everybody to the office area. Are there additional security procedures we can do in the office area, um, for added protection? Um, I, I don't know necessarily if, if all of those questions were asked back in two thousand nine at, at our last bond. And so, um, for me, uh, the, the main reason why we kept investigating and looking at different products and things like that was that, um, through input from our families and from the community. One of the main things that people said was that if someone were to get into the building, what can we reasonably do to provide protection for our staff and students? And overwhelmingly, the answer kept coming back is, was that while you, you won't be able to stop, uh, everything from happening. Your main goal should be to slow that person down. And, um, we felt this was the best solution that we could find to date. That allowed teachers to secure those doors without having to go out into the hallway and then come back in. And while it may not be perfect and it may not, um, stop someone if they're going to take five minutes to get through that door. They're going to get through the door, but even if it slows them up or matures them for sixty seconds. Every minute that we slow them down is a benefit of saved lives for students and staff. And so, um, that I would say from my perspective is really the specific reason why we brought this solution. I don't want to speak on behalf of SAM's security committee or safety committee or anything like that. But I think again, the solution was just trying to address that one piece of the overall issues that, that we have. Um, it's not to say that, uh, we don't need to continually look at products, look at adding additional security, looking at, um, relooking at our entrance ways, yes, we, we certainly should do that as well as other items that the safety and security committee are looking at. So, um, so, so that's just sort of my perspective. I, I also want to, um, just make sure the board is clear too. We had a couple of questions when it came to funding. And so, um, you know, the, the board really has the general fund to use. And while we have a, um, you know, we refer to it as, uh, our, our Satan's account. It's, it's still general fund. And so, the question would be, okay, well, let's, you know, we, we can use our general fund money to purchase this. Why do we matter if, or why does it matter if, if it's deducted out of general fund and we go over our budget? The reason is, is that, um, over the last, uh, year and a half when we refunded our bonds. We had, um, some of the best financial ratings around. And as soon as this district spends one dollar more than what has been appropriated in this annual budget. It impacts our ratings because it shows that we have spent in a deficit. That's one of the reasons why back in December, um, uh, we articulated to the board why we wanted to create a capital funds fund. And, um, the reason for the importance of that is that allows us to move general fund money into a capital fund. Um, and as time goes on, you know, we can, we can try and put some money in there so that, you know, whether it's this type of purchase or a boiler going out, it gives us a vehicle to draw down money to pay for a big capital expense without hitting our general fund to the point that it goes into deficit. We get, um, worse ratings than we normally would, which ultimately does impact the taxpayer. I hope that wasn't too confusing to, um, an explanation of, 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 um, how we can fund this. Other than to just say, I think we've got the, um, I think we have the general fund available to us this year. We, we didn't budget so tight as that, you know, whether it's, um, you know, money in, in Tony's accounts or other accounts that we, we can't find fifty thousand dollars to do this. Um, but most definitely going forward, and I think you will see this when either we bring the amended budget next month or SAM brings the final budget, uh, in June. Uh, you will see our recommendation of moving some general fund money into our capital fund and start populating that so that when things like this come up, it, it allows the board to, um, have the confidence to draw down and spend that money without negatively financially impacting the district in the long term. I think I said too much.
Okay, I'll, I'll, no, I'll do one question, I just, very rarely as a parliamentarian. But I think as a point of parliamentary procedure, we, we have to move to approve, you know, this and get support and then discussion. We're kind of doing it hard before the bars, we're discussing this, this issue, uh, before we've moved to approve a, a, a motion. And proper procedure would be that we need to have the, uh, motion approved, support, then the discussion. And that's what we've been doing kind of, but I think some of this has led up to it. And then the figure is we're going to need to vote on this tonight.
Let's, let's do it in the proper procedure, we'll do it the right way and thanks for pointing that out.
And I will move to approve the purchase of Nightlock's security devices in the amount of fifty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-five cents.
There was an amendment.
Amended through fifty thousand, forty-two dollars and eighty-five cents as presented. And just to let you know, once this is supported, we have then the discussion on it. And then we can decide on the vote, support.
Support, Mr. Stuckey. Okay, now we will get back to discussion.
So starting over, am I asking?
No. But I do have a question on that, that, my concern is that, and I, I get that we, how we want to finance this in a manner that doesn't detract from our credit rating, so to speak. So that's important. And I'd like to, you know, we need to do that as soon as possible. I know, I remember December, we talked about a capital improvement fund and we need to do that. And, um, if we can do that in short order, I'd rather myself see that capital improvement fund done. And then that money come from that rather than out of the general fund of the budget. Because as Mr. Weaver mentioned last meeting, we don't know where we come up with, you know, two thousand dollars for testing, our budget's tight. And what I'm saying on that is not that there isn't money that can't be, uh, moved around a little bit, but it does not often come back in as fast as it goes out of the operating budget. And for me as a board member, that's a concern as to how we finance it. And also I'd like to just hear a little bit more of people's thoughts and other board members on whether, you know, they feel strongly about doing this as a means of security now or if we need to look at it further.
Any other further, Mr. Stuckey?
Well, like I said last meeting, I, you know, I did opportunity to see this and, and talk extensively with a representative from Nightlock. Uh, at the last M A S B, uh, meeting and I was really impressed by it. So I'm all for it, I, I think it's a great product, it's a very durable product. Uh, other than what Tim said, losing the piece, that, you know, or them coming up missing the actual lock piece. You know, that, that has to be held separate, other than that, I don't see this thing ever wearing out. You know, it'll be on our doors forever, so I, I fully support you.
I, I will say that, uh, on Saturday, I don't know if any of you caught the Detroit News article. There was a shooting in a rural, in this, Mike had asked, um, whether we had a, a, a shooting or a gun run in the school or, and, and great questions. And it just so happened on Saturday, there was an article in Detroit News. In forty-five minutes north of Columbus, Ohio, in a rural farming community, there was a student sixteen years of age with a shotgun, went into the school, shot a fourteen-year-old. And out of the way in the story, it said, had we had, we tried to barricade the doors and we couldn't barricade the doors to keep them out. To me, as I teetered, I think it goes to the point where if we give our police liaison an extra sixty seconds, an extra ninety seconds to get from point A to point B, I think that solves that problem. Again, Heather's point, you're not going to stop somebody who's intent to get into the building. But if you can minimize the damage that is done, whether it's to stop them at the office, to stop them in the corridor. Um, and, and that's what we need to do. I just don't, I don't see any way in my mind that I can vote for not doing this because for fifty thousand dollars. And I'm quite confident in our, the way that our budget looks, that we should have an access at the end of the year. Um, I, I mean, that's just my, uh, and I said it last week, I, I just, I don't want to be in this position if that happens. And, you know, if you think it can't happen in Oxford, these people outside of Columbus, Ohio, they didn't think it could happen. They even said, the kids broke the windows to get out of the school, to run across the cornfield, to go to a house. Uh, I, that's just my thoughts on it. Um, one other question that I have Sam is, uh, when we have the amended budget, it's due March?
I'm actually bringing it forward in February. So at the first board meeting in February in two weeks, you'll be, um, having a look at our amended sixteen, seventeen general fund budget.
So in that amended budget, could we account for this in that?
Uh, based upon this evening, um, I will put a line item within that budget, um, obviously within maintenance and operations budget for this expenditure as a placeholder.
Alright, and then, uh, follow up to that question, if we're, we're even and this expenditure pushes us over and we have money in the general fund.
Fund equity?
Fund equity. Can we erase this negative equity with that?
Well, what would happen is it, it would definitely, if we ended the year theoretically even, so a balanced budget. But this, in and of itself, this project put us fifty thousand dollars into a deficit. It would indeed, as Tim had said, affect us. Would it drop our credit rating? Possibly not. But it, it isn't a good thing that you are reducing your fund balance, whether it's expectedly or unexpectedly, year over year. Um, so I hope that answers your question, I'm not sure if it does. But again, if all else is being equal and this is the only expenditure that really put us over. We would be taking from our fund balance, which is very favorable. Um, and that, that goes without saying, we have almost eight point, you know, four million dollars or approximately eight point four million dollars. So, uh, theoretically it's there, it's just that you are taking away from that year over year. And that is, um, something that most districts don't want to do, as Tim had mentioned, so.
I just want to make a couple more comments. Um, I also talked to several teachers at more than one building. And, um, I asked them about how they felt about having to get out of their rooms, lock the door and then go back in. And three out of four of them said to me, but if they're built in their, if, if they're in the building, what does it matter? And so I, I, I just, I do want to go back to that point that, um, if you really want to talk about security, you have to secure the entrance and not allow somebody in. If I'm going to put an alarm on my home, I'm not going to put locks on all my kids' doors and not have a lock on my front door. You have to look at securing the actual building and not allowing them in. This is a lot of money to spend. I insist, we do have locks on the doors, it's not like we don't have locks, we do have locks. These locks are good quality, I don't want you guys to think I'm, it's a good quality product, it really is. Um, and if that's what, you know, needs to be done to lock, you know, if, if the locking of the doors is the answer, then this is a good quality product. That does not secure the building. Because the person would already be able to enter the building because there is not frontal security. And especially the elementary schools, I'm speaking more on behalf of that. Though I think the high school and the middle school has a better system because it's a one main entrance situation where they have a better view, you can see better.
Okay, um, Tony, I guess I have a question for you. As we chat, being a principal here, Todd, Deisha, I don't see any, Alitha, you're in Deisha's same area, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. You guys are so young, you don't look like anything's going to happen. Sorry, Josh. Currently, when you go into your, when, when somebody's coming into your building, to Heather's point. I know that we have systems in place to keep people from getting to those, to those, past those doors. My question is, is to the principals first, are we utilizing those? I know if I go to the middle school, I, I can't get in unless I go at that one door, the cowbell rings and, and they know you're there. Is that happening across the district where we're using what we put in place?
Absolutely, for sure. They, they have to come in for DA, I have to visit O E S as well, you have to come through the office. So you, the only way you can enter the building is if you come through the office. Like what Heather's expression is that you can get into the office without being stopped. Because you come in and go around and then you're into the office area, but you must, you can't get into the building unless you've come past the secretary.
And I know it's the same way here, is you can get into the building, those doors are closed, uh, just to the left of the main entrance. The two, the two sets of blue doors, and then you have to go to the office to go past. I mean, you can go around, but you're going to be met by the glass and they're all locked.
But you can walk into the office, you, you don't have to be buzzing. So like, Lakeville, when you come in, the se- the security vestibule there, the secretary looks right at you. Where when you walk into DA, you walk into the vestibule, that's a blind spot. You don't know who's in that vestibule, they open the door if they're in the office. So you can't physically see it. Now we put a, a buzzer on Clear Lake where when you walk into their vestibule and you come up to the door, she actually will see you in the, in the window and she can allow it to buzz you in. You can't do that with like DA, you'd have to put a camera in.
That's what I was just going to say, if we're going to do this.
And then at high school, you walk in the front door, you have, you can't get back into where the students are. But you can walk right into the main office, now you've got people in the main office all the time.
Okay, I would like to see, yes, obviously we're going to vote on this, but if we have instances like Heather's talking about and what Tony just mentioned. Where there's a blind spot, I think it would be to our benefit and to our students and our staff's benefit. When we have those instances of a blind spot, put a camera in there, they're not really expensive. Would you agree with that?
I assume on a different note, I don't want to be the one to terrify everybody. But like, we let our children into the building like clockwork every day. They have to come in, the doors are open. If you're a bad person and you come to our school one day, you know what time entry is, you know what time dismissal is. Kids have to every day get on the bus, we do it like clockwork every single day. And we let children go out to recess every single day to a bell. And so if you're a terrible, horrible human being, our buildings are incredibly accessible like. are incredibly accessible like clockwork. And, you know, I, I don't want to diminish your concern in any way, Heather, but when I'm laying home at night, those are the times of day that I'm terrified about. Because I have no idea what we would do at recess if something happened outside. There's, there's so many different things to think about. The, yes, entryways are very concerning. But we have, there's just so many things that are built into our day that are terrifying to me, that I just don't know how we solve.
Well, this to me, and Heather, those are great points. And I think if we have areas that we can address, I don't know how we address that. You can't. I mean, you can't address that concern, Jeff. It's just, I mean, how many kids are coming and going at one time? And somebody that wants to do harm is going to do harm, as unfortunate as it is. I guess what we have to think about is how do we, how do we shorten that window of opportunity during the day? And if that opportunity is, are coming in and out of schools, and they're, you know, we, we know what that point is. The other point is, is recess coming in and out. Okay, we have that covered as best we possibly can. But then there's a whole nother majority part of the day, that, that building is, you know, those doors, you get past the, the front office, and it's free game. I hate that we're even discussing this, but it is what it is in our society today. So, any other?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm in favor of the program. I have a question. Who's developing the process for its use? Is it the safety committee?
We will be, yes. If this was approved, we would be putting together a process. And obviously, this is part of what's called the Alice training. You may have heard of this. But again, if you can't flee, if there is an active shooter, or someone doing harm in a building, walking from, let's just say, classroom to classroom, obviously, the next best thing besides fleeing is obviously barricading in place where this comes into play. And so we would, again, look to a process to educate, to communicate within the district. In addition to those that aren't currently employees of the district, as an example, our substitute teachers, we'd have to have a communication plan as well as a training in place for those individuals. So not just them, obviously custodial staff. So it's pretty much across the board. So this isn't simply, if this was to be approved, this isn't simply buying some locks, having them installed, and then wishing for the best. There is going to be a process, process that would have to be created and put in place for this as well.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Obviously, there's endless scenarios of what can go wrong in a district of this size. And there's certain issues that pertain specifically to elementary that don't happen at the high school. So it's good to hear all the perspective. The goal in any safety plan is always to minimize risk as much as possible that you cannot eliminate. So what we are trying to do, and I feel that everyone is involved in the safety committee, is to minimize risk as much as possible. And as we're talking about some of these things, giving as much time for help to come on the way, once, once we notice, once there's something in, in the building that needs to be addressed, every, you know, ten seconds that you can delay someone, the good guys are coming, so to speak. Call is in. So we, we do that. So I understand. So I am for this. I just need a little bit more understanding in how we're going to pay for it. Now, I know there's, we have the money. And if there's a way for us, if you're going to be dealing with an amended budget in February, in our first meeting, can that include that issue that, Tim, you were talking about, that funding into the, what, what type of fund did you call it?
Capital improvement.
Can you put that in the proposal of the amended budget, if that's going to be seventy-five or a hundred thousand, whatever you intended to be, so that we can approve it and then just take it out of there?
Yes. The quick answer to your question is absolutely yes.
I would be in favor of that, then.
So if there is additional revenue over expenditures for the sixteen-seventeen amended budget, which we anticipate there is, but again, until I finalize the numbers and bring it to you, I can't say definitively whether that's the case. Let's assume that is the case. I can definitely make a movement, a proposed movement from the general fund into the capital project fund of X dollars, that would either go towards or fully fund a project such as this.
Well, and again, and I think we should continue that, that capital improvement each year, in a specific amount that the board feels comfortable with, so that we have those monies set for these different things. So it's handled properly, quickly, and it doesn't affect our credit rating.
Mr. Stafford?
Thank you. Sam, I was just wondering if, I see a big hole in your process, if you will, when it comes to substitute teachers and things like that, or people that aren't normally in the building. I, I guess you could set up a process in place for all staff, maybe just see a video that, you know, of how these work, or all other standards, I guess, of our building. You know, what other things are in place. But do the substitutes, when they come in now, are they given information, okay, this is the way we do things, blah, blah, blah? Do, do they get something like that, that they're?
Yeah, usually all the classrooms, I can't speak to this stuff briefly, and then the principals can jump in as well, too. Generally, we give them, when they first come into the building, secretaries will give them, I don't know, Mrs. Lutowski may give them some briefings as well, too. But when they first time subbing in a building, the secretaries know that. They take them through some of the, the quick urgency procedures and steps. Plus, there's a nice manual that Mrs. Lutowski and her committee had developed as well, too, hanging in each classroom. So that's readily available. Plus, all the, I know the middle school, we always used to send out a notice. Plus, teachers are pretty aware when their sub is next to them and so forth. And so they also then buddy up and look after them during the day as well, too, and making sure they're taken care of.
Yeah, a manual hanging on the wall in a classroom, when Dunkley comes on, says lockdown, isn't going to help.
Yeah, it was handled fully. They, yeah, when they sign with the keys, and it's written full, and they point out, dude, if they're brand new, you can't do that. All right. The manual has the explicit instructions. The subholder has short abbreviated, if it's an emergency, this is what, plus the secretaries take them through. But the manual has like, you know, because there's anything that could happen.
Absolutely.
So that has everything from tornadoes, the sheltering in place, the fires, the, you name it, it has everything.
We, we can drill the year, the students go back into the subs.
That's what I was just going to say.
Where the students want additional. Yeah, okay. I would imagine if, if you're picturing some of the students that I know in this building in particular, you say that if it's a lockdown, Mr. Dunkley's voice comes out, there's a lockdown, and you have substitute teacher, boy, and it's his or her first day, you're going to have one kid in that classroom that's going to say, and again, I said at the last meeting, the simplicity of this device, it's, it's, you slide it in. I mean, you saw it, very accurate words.
It is.
Very, very simplistic. So, okay. Any other further comments?
I just appreciate any more information from Tim and Sam, and being able to call some of the references. I was, I was very uncertain a couple weeks ago, but I've talked to some parents and colleagues, people I actually have, and is this in place? I feel more confident that this is a good purchase for the district.
Was any, were you able to talk to Matt? Because I know Peter.
Um, wondering?
Yeah.
No, I didn't. I talked to Jefferson, Public Schools.
Okay. All right. Yeah, because I know Peter has it throughout their district, and I know a family there. It didn't seem to be too much of an issue there, but I don't know how it was ruled out. Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Vote. Yep, we need a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Don. When would be an appropriate time to talk about how we got to that decision? Is it in final board comments? I didn't want to mix up my thoughts with approving the system. But I wanted to talk about how we got to the discussion.
We can do that.
Comments?
We can do that. Yeah, we can do that in comments.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Item A, Human Resources.
I have nothing this evening.
You want to just throw something out there?
Okay, forward to interviewing people there.
Student Services, just sweep.
In your board pack is a memo for School of Choice for the seventeen-year new school year, and some supporting data, your recommendation, it'll be on the agenda, there'll be a motion on the agenda next quarter. So if you have any questions, you can email me.
All right. I did, I did see the recommendations. And they seem to be pretty consistent with what we've already done. And I want to just, for the sake of the new board numbers, Tim, you might want to make sure I have it completely correct. But the reason that we were, use the word unlimited, is because the minute that we put a number on it, that's what it is. So all of a sudden, we have limited to seven students. And we have eight. We are stuck at seven.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Also, if you're limited, you have a fifteen-day window that you can be open. If you're unlimited, we can be open, we'll open on March first, and we'll stay open for Schools of Choice until August eighth, which is a week before school starts. So they have to, you have to have some time to do those last-minute enrollies. So the window is much wider when you're unlimited. And also, when you're limited, if you, if you have seven slots, and you have eight people enroll or apply, it's a lottery. So it may, it's not necessarily the first eight people through, or seven people through the door. You have to have a lottery. So just more restrictions when it's limited.
And it's just one of those things where the laws preclude, the laws really dictate how you verbally put that into, how you're going to put it out there, so. Okay.
So you'll see that recommendation next week, or two weeks.
Very good. Thank you.
Question?
Yes, sir. Mr. Stafford?
Does it matter whether it's limited or unlimited in our ability to screen applicants?
The, the regulation is anybody that applies is eligible. The only disqualifying factor is suspensions, expulsions for the previous two years. So you don't get to say, I'll take you, but you can take her. The only thing you can set uses discipline, is a disqualifying factor for both limited and unlimited.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Item ten, unscheduled audience participation. Jill?
Yes? Oh, I just wanted to say, thank you very much for the discussion on the last. I know it's a starting point. I know that we have a lot more to do as far as the safety is concerned. But I'm very appreciative of the discussion and the research to back that up, because it's, it's so very important in, in safety of our children, and our teachers, and the staff, and so on. So thank you.
Item eleven, certification, Mr. Throme. None. Final board comments. Mr. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two things. Being new to the board, last meeting, I had a few questions on the night lock system. At the end of that meeting, I asked what was the appropriate way to get answers to my questions. I was told to give it Mr. Throme. I got with Mr. Throme. An email pushed me to Tony. And today, to today, I never got an answer. Except for Heather, who went to a meeting. So I asked her to ask my two questions, which you then sent an email saying that I could be breaking or transgressing the Open Meeting Act. And so I need some help. How do I, how do I get information? Because I want to make an educated decision. But in two weeks, I can't get answers to my questions. So someone who's going to do something that I can't do, because I'm working, but she's going to go, and she says, can I answer any question, or can I do anything? And I send her and say, hey, give me the answer to these two questions. And then your response was that I could be transgressing this. And everything that I see about this is illegal forums, illegal deliberation to vote. There's nothing in here that says you can't fact find.
Okay. The, the answer to that question is, is if we electronically, we kind of came across this multiple times in the past, if we look on electronic media, whether it be text or email, we look like we're deliberating, asking questions to deliberate towards the conclusion of a vote, it can be interpreted by an attorney that says, you may, you may have violated the Open Meetings Act. The reason I had sent that email is, if we don't have those conversations at all, questions going back and forth, it's okay if you sent it to me, or you sent it to Heather, and maybe I should have clarified that. You could send it directly to Heather, if it's just two of you communicating. But when it's replied all, now all seven of us are in that conversation, and it looks like we could be breaking that public trust.
It would have been easier if someone would have answered my questions.
Yeah. So let's, and I know, and that's not to take, it's not an excuse. I know Tim was out of town at conferences. But I think Tim did an appropriate thing and forwarded on. Those answers need to happen. So without a doubt, you have every right to those answers. You have every right to ask those questions. So we will, I'm sure Tim will address that.
That's all I have.
Okay. Very good.
How was the question? Just, and just follow up on Tom's concern. I noticed like what you said, and I think you gave good advice. You can talk back and forth with an individual board member, and just what you read in there, it speaks to forums for people. And, but then just what Dan was saying, when you reply to all of, just if you're talking to one member and everybody else is on there, that could be interpreted or misinterpreted as a forum. So any conversations you have between each other, or with another third person, you're not a forum. Which is the, the way, because we have to find an effective way to communicate with each other outside of our meetings a little bit, so that we can compare.
Right. And so, and so one of my questions would be, Heather's initial email, was it wrong because she sent it to everyone?
No.
Or she, she sent out eight individuals?
No, that's an informational item.
Okay. And so when I responded by saying, I'll email you, did I pull all of you out of a forum problem?
I believe so.
Right.
It's just that we, we, we err on the side of the.
Okay. All right.
It's a fair question for you to ask.
All right. Because I, I mean, I purposely didn't say everything in that.
I know.
Okay.
Okay. Just the, the dinner tonight, phenomenal. Appreciate it. It's, it's always well done. And to have a board recognition month is tremendous, because there's many recognition days, but we get a whole month. So I really appreciate it, and it goes over well. And the meals and the desserts are phenomenal. The student playing music, Todd, thank you for having that. And it's always very rare that I have dinner music. We're out there. So that was, that was appreciated. Live dinner music, I guess, is what it's.
It's not the Patrick.
Right, yeah. That's true. And the host of students, excellent. To see that they're in competition and enjoying their, their education, and how they're learning, and the teacher. And also then with the, the partnership with the Booster Club is just phenomenal to see our school working together in that. So always glad to see that. And the process with the Oxford Cup is phenomenal. I do have a, a topic I'd like to address under other then.
Okay. Ms. Shaker?
I really enjoyed the host's presentation. I thought that was awesome. And I'm really glad, and I want to take, take this opportunity, especially thank Sam and Chad, who left, and Tony, again, for taking the time and gathering all this information about the security system. Again, I don't want, I, I hope I didn't come across that I don't want security for our buildings. I just want to make sure that we're spending our dollars in the right spots. And I, and I'm glad, and I'm glad we're, we're moving forward, and it'll be good. So thanks to everybody for, the dinner dinner was really nice. So thanks to everybody for the dinner, the dinner was really nice, so thank you very much.
Mr. Steppich?
I would like to thank Pat and him putting the, put the dinner on together and Karen Bessette was usually here, but not tonight. Thank you for that, it was real nice. Host of kids are great and I'm real glad, real glad that Laura could come tonight and give the presentation of the money to them. It was really great to see two teams or two organizations in the school and the kids and, and parents working together for the benefit of really everybody. Was real glad to see the presentation on the Oxford Cup, that was real important to me. And you guys really did do a thorough job and thank you for that, cause I think it needed looking at, cause I think it was getting maybe a little sloppy for the last couple of years. At least some of the feedback that I've been hearing. And I guess that's it, thank you.
Once again, thank you for the wonderful dinner, we definitely appreciate it as a board, and it's really outrunning just your view, so, but thank you for the dinner. Again, thank you to Ms. Petrus and HOSA, they have opened up incredible doors for our kids. My daughter's going into nursing school after being introduced to nursing through HOSA. So I'm just very grateful for the opportunity the high school gave her there. Also the Booster Club, awesome to be able to work in partnership. Mr. Dunkley, Mr. News, thank you again for that Oxford Cup presentation and really just well thought out. And unfortunately, you know, now that that's done and sort of checked off, I'm hoping that maybe you can look at the male athlete, female athlete of the year and how those awards are given. I know there were some, just some questions last year, like, you know, is an athletic director selection, like how that vote's taken, so maybe that kind of work can continue.
If you need that presented, we did that, if you need that presented.
Okay. That would be great, cause I wanna make sure that all those awards and stuff are sort of black and white, how they're given out to people, that would be great, the criteria. The fact finding that our board did, I thought was great, you know, I appreciate Heather doing some legwork, I did some legwork, you know, we all sort of work together. And I think it's great to have like a four one or a four two or a five three vote or whatever the vote ends up being, it can't be eight, so five two. Just the idea that we don't have. I'm an Oxford grad, but never a math major. So that's five two. Sorry, Jeff Brown. But I just think it's nice as a board that we really think out our votes and we just take them so seriously and it is okay to, to not have a seven oh vote every single time on every single issue. But once the board votes to support something, then we're all in. And I just really appreciate that being a board member and often being a six one vote last year, previous year. So it's okay to be the one voice.
I have a, a few things, Todd, thanks for the hospitality and I thank Karen for the wonderful dinner this evening. And thanks for the staff that took time out of your day to come and show your appreciation of the work that we do, but as they said earlier, it's really, we appreciate the work that you do, I think that's why we do this. I wanna make sure that we, again, thank Oxford Bank for the hundred and fifty thousand dollar donation for our scoreboards. And on top of that, we've got a memo from, from Tim that McLaren also donated twenty five thousand dollars, I think it was last week. So to be used for our scoreboards as well, so we're gonna start to see those improvements soon. And I wanted to thank those two entities because that's really, affirmatively, that's what a community's all about, when you get the, the folks that believe in your district, contributing to that amount of money, that speaks volumes for your district and where we're heading in the right direction. I wanna also thank the, the conversation of, of the entire board that we had about the different topics that we had. You know, it's, as Joyce was saying, it's good to have a conversation about different opinions and how we do things. And, you know, we're not always gonna see it the same way, but as the vote, the vote goes, the vote goes. And that's how we move forward, we move forward together as a board and as Wildcats. So, that being said, I'm gonna say one additional thing about what's kind of taking place higher than state at the federal level. I appreciate all the comments that I've received lately about, hey, have you, I've received a few emails, hey, what can you do to make sure that so and so, and I'm not gonna mention names, doesn't get nominated? Well, I sent emails and I just want everybody to realize that, whatever that vote is, we all have our opinions on it. At the end of the day, it's, it's gonna be what it is, whether it's yes or no. I think our kids look at the political landscape today and they're very, very confused. And I think it's our job as adults to make sure that we are smoothing that landscape to help them understand. So that's, that's all I wanna say about that and, Tim?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Can I just, one real quick thing? Mr. Dunkley, if you guys have some information on that, on the female and male athlete, I would appreciate that, a presentation at the next meeting?
Go on there, just ask, ask more.
Okay, next meeting, put it on the agenda. I'd like to hear that.
Two of us can agree, there's not one should have. That's all there is.
Dialogue.
It's true.
Alright, Mr. Throne?
Just making a note here, first of all, this was given to the board from DA, this was a thank you that they made for the Board of Education for the recent book purchases and so, I wanted to make sure that we, we presented that.
Hold it up to the camera, Dan.
I can't read it from this side, but.
Okay, well done. On a note, I, I wanna thank the board and for your service, obviously as Mike said, this is Board Appreciation Month and as you can already see, it's not just showing up for, you know, maybe a couple hours, a couple of times a month, there's a lot more involved and so, I, I really do appreciate your service to our community for that. On a, a note similar to what has already been discussed tonight, you know, if there is something in particular that the board wants to put on the agenda, we, we can do that as long as we try and get it on the agenda before it's posted. So, Mike had emailed the board and said that there was an item that, that maybe he would like to discuss, but this was, agenda was already been out, we can always amend them, obviously at, at your prerogative, but, you know, in a case like this, if there's either presentations or additional information, things like that, that you want on the agenda, feel free to either get ahold of Dan or myself and we try to get together before that's posted and make sure that it's, that it's on the agenda. Just a couple of follow up things. I, I'm not sure I received Heather's email, so I, I don't know if that just was a communication to the other board members, which is okay. It just puts me in a spot where if, if, and, and I know sometimes Dan will send a communication out to you all and I'm not on that, and I, I get that, I understand that. It's, it can be difficult sometimes then to follow up and make sure that something is happening if I don't, if I'm not on that email list.
Right.
And so, I just, I don't know, maybe just stating the obvious there, but I feel like there was a couple of disjointed things that happened and I, I wanna do whatever I can do to make sure that it doesn't happen again. I think with that being said, Tom, I appreciate your comments, I obviously responded and gave, gave the board, gave you the information that, that I know, the only thing I would just say is, you know, if I pass something along to either another assistant superintendent or somebody and whether it's you, Tom, or anybody else, you're not getting the information, again, sometimes I don't know if that person has contacted you directly and they don't copy me or I'm not a part of that follow up conversation, I don't know that there's been a breakdown. So do not ever feel that you're hurting my feelings or that you're bugging me. If you've asked for something and I've directed it one way or another and you're not getting it, let me know, don't wait. Let me know and I will follow up and make sure that you get that information. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Other, we, I mean, do we have another thing that we said there, but that was what we were talking about?
Right.
Okay. Other, Mr. Schwag?
Ready for mine? Well, interestingly enough, I leave, you led right into what I, I had, as you mentioned, there's, there's some stronger issues out there in public education. And what all school boards do is get the best information in the best circumstances for public school students. Interestingly enough, this morning I learned that the East Lansing School Board denounces Betsy DeVos as U.S. Secretary of Education. East Lansing Board of Education has passed a reg, resolution urging all U.S. senators to vote no on the confirmation of Betsy DeVos as Secretary of Education. The Karen Hayne who made that motion and got it seconded says, and I agree with this, I know this is a non-traditional thing for a school board to do, but these are unusual times. It is a time when school board trustees, that's us, need to speak out. I feel particularly strong about this, she said, and I say that tonight too. The resolution passed with six votes in agreement. Trustee Kate Powers abstained from voting citing her work with organizations in the Grand Rapids area, including the DeVos Business Amway. So tonight, I'm making, I move and make a motion that Oxford Public School District Board of Education adopt the resolution to oppose the confirmation of Betsy DeVos as Secretary of Education and to urge all U.S. senators to vote no on her confirmation. Whereas, Betsy DeVos does not possess a degree in ed, in any educational field and has never attended a public school, sent her children to a public school, or worked in a public school. And whereas, at the Senate Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions Committee Confirmation Hearing, Betsy DeVos demonstrated an ignorance of basic educational issues such as Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act idea and the difference between growth and proficiency. And whereas, at the Senate Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions Committee Confirmation Hearing, Betsy DeVos refused to answer questions about her home state of Michigan's struggling charter schools and refused to say whether private and charter schools receiving federal funds should be held to the same accountability standards as public schools. Refused to say whether she would uphold current laws regarding the reporting of sexual, sexual assault on campus and refused to say whether she would uphold current laws that protect students from predatory or profit colleges. Whereas, Oxford Public School District prides itself on its rich history of providing an equitable learning environment to a diverse student body, including students from a myriad of racial, ethnic, religious, and economic backgrounds, students with disabilities, and students who identify as LGBTQ, and is committed to upholding the mandate for a free, appropriate public education for all of its students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Oxford Public School District's Board of Education stands in opposition to Betsy DeVos being confirmed as Secretary of Education and be it further resolved that Oxford Public Schools Board of Education urges all senators to vote no on her confirmation. I'll look for a second on that motion.
One second?
A second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, I, my discussion is, I just wanna make a point on this. On that motion, we have to get it to Pat, correct?
Yes.
So that we can make sure that it's correct, so make sure we get her that. Again, as a district and as an adult, I think we set the tone for how, however this board votes, I want everybody to understand that it sets a tone for our students and we need to act as adults to do, to make sure that they understand why we are, whatever position we take. So, if anybody wants to have further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have a voice vote called, called on our roll? Yes, it's part of the procedure.
Okay. I don't know what that is.
Part of the procedure means everybody says their vote, yea or nay. By person.
Mark will take it. It's basically a roll call vote.
Roll call.
No problem. Treasurer Schwag?
Yes, aye.
Vice President Brazington?
Aye.
President Alessandra?
Yes.
Secretary Steppich, aye. Trustee Donnelly?
Abstaining. I don't think you can.
Trustee Schaefer?
Aye.
So there are five ayes. Okay, alright. Can you make sure that?
I'll get it.
Pat gets that?
Yep.
Make sure we have the verbiage correct. You may wanna make sure that.
Did you hear that?
Help as well.
Pat will do.
Okay, alright. It's good to be a Wildcat. Welcome to the journey.